Safe streets, vibrant neighborhoods, successful business and commerce. These are things that make a healthy community. We are a diverse community, rural, suburban, urban. A multitude of languages and ethnicities, ages and experiences. We are a collaborative community. Public-private partnerships make us a model community that others want to follow. It is what makes us unique. It is what makes us strong. The employees of Kent County reflect our diversity and seek to serve our communities.
People in this county, in this area, we wrap our arms around each other. We come together to collaborate, to solve problems. We're all working for the good of the whole. And I think that's wonderful. And you can see it. You can see it as you drive around Kent County.
Our impact starts the day a baby is born and a birth certificate is issued. To protecting children from deadly diseases through vaccination, to the public safety and justice provided by law enforcement and the courts, to offering veterans services and caring for the elderly. Every day, we work to keep our communities robust.
I think if you are somebody who is interested in serving your community, in building a strong knowledge base and a good group of people to work with, then the county is one of your best employment opportunities out there. It's been completely rewarding in every way I could possibly explain for 26 years. And I feel like I grow every single day still today.
Leading these dedicated employees are 19-member Board of Commissioners and our county administrator-controller, along with our elected officials and appointed department directors, placing emphasis on civic involvement, quality housing, vibrant neighborhoods, and strong solid infrastructure to allow businesses to thrive. Professional, dedicated, collaborative, and innovative.
Behind the scenes collaboration between foundations, charitable organizations, nonprofits, for-profit businesses, public sector demonstrated through the county, the city of Grand Rapids, the townships, all the cities and the villages in our area. If we don't come together, then we will not have the strength that we have today. And I only hope to build upon that.
Our aim is to make our communities the best they can be. We are involved in exciting development projects, sustainable recycling programs, and creative progressive prevention programming. We partner with elected officials impacting policy ideas that become great achievements. We seek opportunities to reach out into the community and offer our services to help our residents make Kent County thrive.
Our relationship is solid, both from a staff standpoint at the county level as well as the Board of Commissioners. And they understand what we do and the benefits that we can do for the community. And vice versa, we couldn't do what we do without the help of Kent County.
While most of us are busy running our lives, Kent County's elected officials, administrator-controller, and over 1,600 employees are serving the communities where we live our lives, so we can all have a place we are proud to call home. Kent County, its life well-run.
Good morning and welcome to the Kent County Board of Commissioners. Today is Thursday, April 27, 2017. And we'll begin today's meeting with roll call.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners Vonck.
Here.
Antor.
Here.
Morgan.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Vice Chair Bolter.
Here.
Steck.
Here.
Ponstein.
Here.
Voorhees.
Present.
Coleman.
Here.
Breeby.
Here.
Mast.
Here.
Melton.
Here.
Hennessy.
Here.
Tallon.
Here.
Volkowski.
Present.
Womack.
Here.
Cornnight.
Present.
Skaggs.
Here.
Chair Saulfeld.
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have 19 present and zero absent. You have a quorum.
Thank you, Clerk. We will move then to item number three and four and ask Commissioner Melton to lead us in an invocation and Pledge of Allegiance.
The service you do for others is the rent you pay for your room here on earth. Wise words from Muhammad Ali. Each of us on this board has been elected by our respective districts throughout Kent County. They have entrusted us to make decisions on their behalf. We are charged to both lead and serve our constituents. I stand here before you honored to be a member of this Board of Commissioners. Margaret Mead once said, "Never doubt that a small group of thoughtful committed citizens can change the world." Well, perhaps we won't be changing the world here in this room, but each decision we make in these chambers has an effect on all who call Kent County home. Each time a man stands up for an ideal, or acts to improve the lot of others, or strikes out against injustice, he sends forth a tiny ripple of hope. Words from the late Senator Robert Kennedy. As we make our decisions about budgets, staffing, and many other things, we too can send a ripple of hope. Too often lately, we are being assaulted with claims as to what group in our country has the most power. I would like to challenge all of us here to consider the following quote from a former President of the United States. "There is but one just use of power, and it is to serve others." Former President George W. Bush. Will you pray with me, please? Heavenly Father, I pray this morning that you will guide and lead each one of us on this board, that you will choose, that we will choose service over power, and show our leadership through our service to the citizens of Kent County. Grant us wisdom, focus, to be able to make decisions knowledgeably. You sent your Son to teach us the true meaning of service and sacrifice. Thank you. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance. Here to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Melton. We will move then to Agenda Item 5, which is our Special Order of Business. And we will welcome Burgett Close, who will present on behalf of the Right Place.
Good morning.
One of our very esteemed stakeholders here.
Good morning. Thank you for having me again. I always say this, I don't know where a year goes, but it's been a year since I had the pleasure to speak to you, and a lot of things have happened in that year. And as I always do, I want to thank you for the partnership that we've had with Kent County for 32 years now. As I think all of you know, I'm the President and CEO of the Right Place, your economic development organization, as well as that for Kent County and the region. And why invest in economic development? And you have been one of the original founders of this organization 32 years ago. And even back then, it was about creating jobs, building independence, increase our tax base. It promotes diversity. It strengthens our families. It grows our communities. It builds wealth, and it retains talent. One of my favorite sayings is, and I appreciate it, Commissioner Melton's sayings, is from a fellow by the name of Hewitt Kaufman. "The best social service is a good job." And that's what the Right Place really is all about, with your help. I think many of you know the organization has been around now since 1985. I've been with the organization since 1987. I want to point out, I was 18 at the time, so... But in any case, our mission really is retention, creation, is retention and expansion of jobs, investment, and businesses in the area. The interesting thing, over all those many years, we still get 80% of our funding from the private sector. We have 270 investors, of course you are one of those. 10% comes from the public sector. County is our largest public sector investor. We have just about everybody in Kent County, including townships as our investors. And then 10% come from foundations. This is quite remarkable after 32 years. Quite honestly, my colleagues around the country, when we meet, are amazed that we have continued to get the kind of support we do from our municipal leadership as well as our private leadership. What do we do? Everybody thinks that we do mostly attraction, that yellow button on the right-hand corner, but actually, 80% of what we do is retention and expansion. And why do we do that? Because we want to make sure that the companies that are here already, and have made a commitment over years and sometimes decades, get the exact same help that somebody who wants to come here from somewhere else gets. There are a lot of reasons for that, but you know, every one of you is in business, every one of you has a customer, whether it's for cookies, or insurance, or whatever it may be, but you want repeat customers. And we want repeat customers. And so, we call on over 400 companies a year to make sure that they know the services that are available from the Right Place. And yesterday, we were pleased, obviously Kent County is our core county, but we also now service Ionia, Moncombe, and Nowago. They pay for those services themselves, but we staff it. Yesterday, we were pleased to announce a retention project in Greenville, a company that was looking at combining two plants, and it was between us and another community. That would have meant a loss of 53 jobs, and also the loss of 70 new jobs. Well, we made it. And so Greenville is getting to keep 53 jobs, and is getting 70 new jobs. And that community really does need those jobs. So that's the nice, that's what we mean by retention. So we retained and we expanded one of the companies. Couple of attraction projects that we recently did, and we do market the community globally. So we go to trade shows in the United States, we go to Germany, we've been to the governor to Israel this year, and other countries. So we announced the attraction of California Closets to Cascade Township here about six weeks ago. It's their first Midwest location, and there'll be over 60 new jobs for that township. And then we attracted an Italian company from northern Italy to Gaines Township about a month ago, that is investing $20 million in a new facility. So just a couple of examples of, in each one of those, in each one of those areas. Couple of other organizations that are co-hosted with us, that we don't often mention, but I want to today, and that is the Michigan Manufacturing Technology Center. It's actually a state federal program that we administer for the 13 counties that make up our region. And they help small and medium manufacturers stay current on technology, Lean Enterprise, Six Sigma. It may not be bricks and mortar, but companies still need to stay current on what it takes to stay competitive, whether that's automation, marketing, et cetera. And then, I think many of you may know Hello West Michigan. It is a separate organization, but housed with us, and they do talent retention and attraction. So they are strictly focused on talent. And a couple of things they're doing right now is very interesting. We have a very robust and growing IT industry in the region, but they need talent. And, you know, so we are doing, they are doing an attraction program from the west coast, because Cisco, Apple, and some others are laying off. And so through Facebook and LinkedIn, they're identifying Michiganders who have left, who have gone to school here, and who may come, want to come back. So they're doing that for the next six months, so that we attract talent or boomerangs back to the area. Do a very good job. Regionally, the governor, as I think many of you know, divided the state about seven years ago now into 10 regions. We are Region 4, that's 13 counties. So when you look on the right-hand side of the mittens, that's number 4. And then if you look on the left-hand side, the 4 in red is who we are directly responsible for, and the others really are partners. In fact, we have a partnership meeting this afternoon up in Nowago. And most recently, we worked very closely with Lake County to get them an economic development strategy, so... But I will say this, if we do not represent ourselves on a global stage regionally, as a region of 1.7, of 1.5 million people, we can't compete. So we market the assets of that entire region when we go to a trade show. Because the airport is as important as is the Muskegon Port, because it's the only deep-water port, for instance. So we want to make sure that we represent all those assets, and also represents our labor shed. So those 13 counties are where people actually move around to go for a job. Just a little update, we had a three-year strategic plan that we closed out at the end of 2016. We completed 61 projects. We did almost $160 million in new payroll, over 4,300 new jobs, and over almost $732 million of new investment. And we, with the exception of one, exceeded all of our goals for that three, for those three years. Just some recognition, you can read those yourself, but we keep getting into the top news. Yesterday, we were from Trulia, in second-best city for millennials in the country. So that was another nice kudos for the region. Our new strategic plan, it's actually an update, not totally new, from 2017 to 19. Our, I won't go through all of the detail there, but we want to create 4,200 new jobs, $150 million in new payroll, and a half a million in new investment. And we have already done seven projects in the first four months of that plan. Our, we continue to concentrate on advanced manufacturing, the food processing industry, life sciences, and IT. And of course, we need the infrastructure to support that. That's, we are, we have been selected by the governor in Region 4 to be a pilot for an infrastructure analysis with the Metro Council. So we're working with them on that. What does $150 million in new payroll mean? It means you're going to have a lot more retail, you're going to have hotels, you're going to have construction, but that's how $150 million would actually ruminate its way through our, through our local economy. Kent County projects during that three-year period from '14 to '16, obviously Kent County is our largest county in the region. So you would get 48 projects in 13 municipalities with almost 3,700 new jobs, and $470 million new investment, almost a half a billion dollars in new investment, which really means you're getting a pretty good return on your investment in Kent County. What are we doing in Kent County? We are working with a lot of our Kent County communities on a certified connected community status. That is something from the Michigan Economic Development Corporation. I serve, obviously, and appreciate serving with a couple of the commissioners on the airport board. I also serve on the committee for the master plan. I want to thank you for your work with us on Switch. They have moved in. I think some of you may have gone on a tour. It's working, and it's creating the ripple effect that we expected. We are working in the four corners, Kentwood, Caledonia, Cascade Township, and Gaines Township, to look at the infrastructure down there. And we also just hosted a group from municipalities for autonomous vehicle planning, and what that would mean for the infrastructure for, for the next few years. So, I know I ran through this very quickly, but I know you have a full agenda, and I prefer questions over me rattling on anyway. But before I do that, I want to say something. I've been in this job for 30 years. And during that time, I've had the privilege to work with Darrell. First, in his role in Rockford as city manager, and actually, I knew him prior to my role here. And 22 years as county administrator. To have someone serve in either one of our roles in as many years of time is highly unusual. I just met a friend from North Carolina in my business, he's on his third administrator in one year. So we have been extremely fortunate to have public leadership in this region for as many years as we have. It builds trust. You know how to work with one another, you get things done. And I want to thank Darrell for being a partner, a friend, and a collaborator. And I miss you. So before I start to cry, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Burgett. And we share your thoughts regarding Darrell. I'm sure we're probably beginning that phase where we're going to get a lot of tributes here in the next few months. But I also wanted to acknowledge that you, and congratulate you, on receiving the Businessperson of the Year Award from the Econ Club. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. It's quite an honor.
Well-deserved. When we were at the bond rating agency meetings in New York two weeks ago, the Right Place came up as part of our discussion.
Oh, thank you.
It's an important piece of who Kent County is, and can't stress that enough. We'll open it up for questions. I have one to start off with. On that chart where you show the counties in four of the 13 are directly contracting with the Right Place, do you see a period where we may, some of the other counties may join? Because it would seem to me that if you had the whole region affiliated with one party, that would even strengthen the power of that region even more.
That's a very good question, Commissioner. Ottawa County has a very strong economic development organization of their own, and so does Muskegon. But the other ones are all smaller and more rural. When I mentioned Lake County, we had received, the Frye Foundation was approached to help Lake County. It's, it's the second poorest county in the state. And the Frye Foundation asked us if we could step in and help. And so we worked in Lake County to actually help them work out a strategic plan, it was a two-year period, get their county commission together like you are here, really work with the communities to say, is this something you want? So they have a plan now, they have an organization, they're raising money. It's entirely possible that they want to do something similar as the other three county, rural counties. There are a couple of others that have approached us, how we can help them. I think over time, that may happen, but we really, what we want is, we don't want to impose anything. So if people are interested in working with us, we're open to it. But we also have to then say, you have to have skin in the game. So Ionia, Moncombe, and Nowago all have their own budgets, they raise their own money in their own communities, and then contract with us for full-time staff person. So over time, I think that there may be another two or three that might come on board.
Great. Other questions? Commissioner Madsen.
Thank you, Chair. I noticed the chart where you, where you had a progression of what happens with $150 million.
Yeah.
New monies. That is fascinating.
Yeah, we had, we hired somebody to help us do that.
How did, okay.
A lot of, a lot of our colleagues around the country, we are getting asked, you know, if, if we are asking you to invest in economic development, what is really the return on that investment?
Right.
So over time, we worked with a couple of folks who know how to kind of take that money and divvy up what happens, and how it then ripples through the community. And those are the percentages that came up. But it is very fascinating. But it's a very good chart for us to say, this is what $150 million of new money.
I would like to have a copy of that. I was looking through the reports here.
We can, you know, the, we can make, I'm sure somebody can get you a copy of the presentation.
Yeah. I would like to at least pull off that chart then.
Yeah.
So can I use that as, you know, just sort of...
Yeah, that's what, that's what it's really, that's what we do. That's why we do this, right? Is, right. Well, and then we also have a chart, it's not in here, but when you look at 740 million of new investment that came to the, into the region in '14, '15, and '16, we also have a chart on how that ripples. Because that's construction, that's, you know, new machinery and equipment that gets purchased. That obviously adds to the wealth as well.
Commissioner Voorhees.
Thank you, Chair Saulfeld. Might more of a compliment, Burgett. The success of Right Place lays a lot on your leadership and the team you put together. I'm thinking back in 1987, when you were 19, I think I was 29, and you came to the city of Wyoming, and you used that same phrase. You said, "Well, Councilman Voorhees, when people come to West Michigan, they'll eat more cookies." And so I voted yes. But to realize the impact that, that growing our economic base here has meant for so many families, and Voorhees family is one who has benefited from your work.
I appreciate it. And that's why we do it, Commissioner, is to help, to strengthen families, to get jobs, to grow the economy, and to, and to really thrive. I mean, because we have such a diverse business base now, it used to be very manufacturing-centric, and obviously, that's still our strength. But you now have a growing IT industry, the food processing industry is growing, and of course, the life sciences is kind of exploding around us. That has really given us a base to really ride out some, you know, some ups and downs, better than some other communities. So we really have been able to diversify, I mean, we, our regional economy, so.
Thank you.
Commissioner Morgan.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Burgett, good morning.
Good morning.
I have to tell you, we always soft pedal this, but one person can really change the dynamics of Board, and since she's joined the Airport Board, she's been very instrumental in promoting the RAA. And we were trying to find a place to park that, because we're getting into a big fundraiser and a big terminal expansion. And we wanted to continue the work of the West Michigan Regional Air.
Sorry, I didn't mention that, yeah.
And I know you don't like to talk about this too much, but Burgett stepped up and found that a home, and it's been going just great guns ever since. So thank you, Burgett.
And we appreciate having you.
And I've been trying to keep up with you for years.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, the Regional Airlines really has fit nicely into, into our overall economic development. You know that the airport, I always said this, I said this for 30 years, I would not want this job without that airport. I mean, and particularly today, when you look at how our region has changed, and how people are traveling differently, particularly business people, even our mid-sized company is now doing business overseas, you know, whether it's Germany, or China, or Japan. So that airport has become critical, and obviously, the numbers of travelers that go through the airport, you know, they hit a new record every month, bears that out. And so that airport is very, very critical to our work.
Commissioner Tallon.
Thank you, Chair. Really appreciate the work of the Right Place, Burgett.
Thanks.
And I wonder if you're looking at what we hear in conversation about the disparity in our community, you may have seen the Bloomberg report yesterday.
Oh, yeah.
Where the increase in the disparity in our region is third in the nation. Are you having conversations about that? Do you have any thoughts that you could share about what we as a community need to do to address that?
Yes, we are having conversations, and I'm having them with colleagues from around the country who are in a similar position, including my friend Mike Langley in Minneapolis-St. Paul, they have the same. There are communities around the country struggling with the same question. Where we are having the conversation, Commissioner, is what can we do at Right Place to increase the diversity of our business base? And I don't mean diversity in terms of the different kind of companies, but diversity in ownership, right? African-American, Latino, women, et cetera. So we have collaborated for the last few months with the Michigan Minority Supplier Council. We've held our first supplier diversity event about six weeks ago. We had over 30 companies attend. We hosted it with M-way at their headquarters. Because we think that from a, from a disparity standpoint, where we can play a role is in the, on the business side of things. We really need, in our region, to, to increase our minority supply chain, whether that's in manufacturing or in other areas. Our board chair is Brian Walker from Herman Miller. They have had a very strong supplier diversity program, so he's very, very much on board with this. And we're, we're meeting again with the supplier, the minority supplier group, Andrew Sims here, who's here locally, and what do we do next? But absolutely, that discussion is being had, and we're looking at where we can play a role as an economic development organization. Because we don't want to be on that list.
Thank you. Commissioner Volkowski.
Thank you, Burgett, for your continued excellent work. My question is, on that one chart hidden in the bottom was talent.
Yes.
Others have said it's not an issue of jobs, it's an issue of talent. And so, other than the issues of disparity, and how a lot of people who are in pockets of unemployment in our community can't get to where the jobs are, is there anybody left to be employed? So if you're out there either for expansion, or retention, or attraction, if somebody says 100 new jobs, are there 100 people that can get to that job?
Well, they are.
With the right talent?
There are, well, we have a talent disparity, there's no question. Our partner is not only Hello West Michigan, but also Michigan Works, because they continue to have a pipeline of folks that do transition in and out of jobs. And so we work very closely with them and identify people who want to go to work. Where we are beginning to have issues, and I think that's what you're getting at, it's sorts of talent, it's education, it's making young people aware of the jobs that are available. It's also, the MEDC is starting to look at the longer-term unemployed, and how do we re-engage that cohort of people who may have been out of a job for a while and lack the skills? So you have to upskill people, you have to get young people interested in the jobs that are out there. Michigan Works and several other organizations, including us, two weeks ago hosted 9,000 middle and high school students next door for a career day, from 89 high schools. They're bussed, they were being bussed in from everywhere, looking at job opportunities in careers in manufacturing, IT, the healthcare industry, and construction. Because the construction people are facing the same problems, people are retiring. So you have several things happening at the same time. The cohort of high school students is declining, the cohort of baby boomers retiring is going up, and you have others who don't have the skills anymore. So it's all converging, right? And unfortunately or fortunately, we're all in the same, in the same boat. Then you layer on top of that, where are the jobs? The city of Grand Rapids is obviously changing, a lot of the jobs are white-collar jobs. And so the other jobs are going... And so the other jobs are going out to our more suburban communities, right? So I have a German company that just moved into a new building about three miles south of 44th and Patterson. And about a third of their employees would take the bus to 44th and Patterson and walk the half a block. Now they don't know how to get to their job. So transportation is becoming a bigger issue, because if you are in a, in an early, in a startup position at a manufacturing company, you probably can't afford a car. So that's an issue.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning.
Good morning.
I love the idea of collaborating with other counties in this area, because I think we're always just as strong as our weakest county.
You got it.
And it's not us against them, because they will help lift us up.
Well, that's why Greenville is great, you know? There's 70 people working in Greenville tomorrow. I mean, that's good for everybody.
Right, and I'm glad we're working towards that. You had mentioned Lake County, a county that I think is just a complete hidden jewel, and they've got some incredible history up there that people don't even know about. Tremendous natural assets. But they are the poorest county in the state. I don't think they've utilized what they have as well, because they don't have the money part. But I'd love to see someone help them.
That's what we've done, yeah, for the last two years. So, and, and, and they do have, and in, in the rural counties, they have like one manufacturing company, it's Peacock Industries. So I don't think we'll locate, you know, a bunch of manufacturing companies up there. But what do you do for a county with the natural assets that you mentioned? They're one of the finest counties in the country for fly fishing, right? I mean, there's, people go up there, it's really probably more tourism and service-based industry, but you know, that still creates jobs. So that's, that's the strategy that we're helping them develop.
Well, I agree with that. And I'm just, I was, it was great to hear that. I had no idea, I guess, we were working on them.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Kudos for your efforts.
Thank you. Well, and if you look at it, you know, you don't, you don't, just because you cross a county line doesn't mean we're not still connected, right? And people cross county lines every day to go to work.
It's just the history of the Baldwin area.
Yeah, exactly.
And the residents. I mean, there's some stories that go back to.
It's kind of a pleasure, sure. Yeah, you're welcome.
Commissioner Vonck.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I go back just a few years when Right Place was formed, and I was on the Plainfield Township Board, and the cost per resident, I think, was 35 cents. Now, I've been just a few meetings since then, but I do remember, I think that was a correct.
That was it.
Dollar amount from just a couple of years ago, and it was money well spent.
Thanks.
But the question I have is for the, those that are graduating this year, and you just sort of alluded to that. So they would graduate from college in 2021, 2022. How many jobs do we need to create a year in the future to retain the best of the best?
That's a really good question, that I can't, I really can't answer that question, but it's a very good question. I'm going to put my research fellow, David Riley, on this. Nationwide, between now and 2021, we need, there will be 5 million jobs going unfilled.
Wow.
Five, that are open. In Michigan, right now, we got 97,000 jobs that are not filled.
Really?
The governor was holding his Education and Economic Development Summit in Lansing Tuesday and Wednesday. And, you know, we need to, we need to do things at several levels. Get parents and high school students interested in the jobs that are out there and get them the education they need. We need to reengage people who are not in the workforce right now to upskill their skills. And we need to attract talent back to Michigan. And it needs to all happen at the same time. It's not either or, it's all of the above. It's, it's really, there are 97,000 jobs in Michigan right now going unfilled. Many of them are skilled jobs, so a lot of the folks who are, what has happened over the last, since the recession, is our companies have upskilled their, their technology. So you need to start matching the skills needed from our employees with the skills needed by the employer. So you're having, at the community college, for instance, an apprentice program right now, modeled a little bit after the German model of dual, dual education. So, you know, there is a lot of things going on. One thing we need to continue to do, though, is invest in education. It's going to, it's what's going to make us different. And if we don't, then, then we will be, we will be hurting, so.
Time for one more question. Commissioner Wolman.
Yes, I just want to say congratulations on what you're doing with our economic development here in Kent County. Everything looks like it's great. I love the work that you've been doing with the airport, Switch, Four Corners, and I'm just elated to see how great Kent County is doing. There's something I wanted to talk about that may not totally be directed at the great work you're doing, but since they brought up ratio disparity, and I heard of some of the reasons we may be third in the nation when it comes to this disparity, I just would like to say, is more to all the commissioners and the people who are here this morning, that I have sent a lot of teachers, ex-teachers, engineers, computer programmers, electricians to different positions that I've seen open, either in the city of Grand Rapids or townships here in Kent County. And I've kind of tracked their resumes and what they've been hearing. And when I see three out of the six, all six of them not only not receive jobs, they don't even feel they had a fair look. They feel as if three out of the six are discussing moving from Grand Rapids, Michigan to going to Atlanta. I've also even seen when African-Americans are in position of hiring, people here in Kent County that there's a lot of nepotism, if you don't belong to a fraternity, you know, they're even discriminated against other African-Americans. It could be somebody from college, but you're not from the fraternity, that this person was in that fraternity. So people can send their frat brothers and sisters, nepotism, family members, in-laws, blackballing of people who may have different ideologies of them, or somebody might have not grew up in the inner city, they might have went to school in the suburbs, so they may be discriminated against other African-Americans, or vice versa. So I've, I've really been tracking that, and I don't know if we need some type of disparity committee to look into what's going on in Kent County, but I have seen just too many people that I know are very talented, very educated. Myself, when I left Grand Rapids, I worked for Walt Disney Records in New York, I worked for Epic Records, I worked for a company that had Boys to Men on the label, and when I came back to Grand Rapids, I really told my parents, after not getting hired in six years to any radio station in any format, I worked for radio stations in New York. I basically just told my parents, if I'm going to be in radio here, I have to start my own business. I have to start something. So I just, and that's no knock to you, because your, your, your work is great. But I just thought that the rest of the commissioners, as we're talking about disparity, that we definitely need to start looking into that and really digging deep to find out what the problems are. Because there are a lot of people of color that want to move out of Kent County to feel that they can have the opportunity.
And we need all the talent we can get regardless of color. So, and there are a lot of organizations that are looking at this issue as we speak. What we need to do, though, is come together and get it figured out together so we don't have silos going along, right? Somebody comes up with one solution and leaves out the other. It's a big conversation that is really going on in, in many communities across the country right now.
Yes, it is.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Bergit.
Thank you.
Very informative, and as always, we very much appreciate partnering with you and wish you all the success, because your success is our success.
Thanks very much. Have a great week.
All right, thank you. We'll move then to 5B, Special Order Business, which is a presentation by Youth Leaders Against Violence. Please come forward, and it looks like you have a PowerPoint for us.
Good morning.
Hi, good morning. Thank you for having us today. I am Claire Volker, and this is my sister, Emma Volker, and we are seniors at Rockford High School and also members of the Group Y Lab, which is Young Leaders Against Violence. And we are a youth-led coalition that works to prevent violence within our communities in the greater Grand Rapids area.